Let's turn it over to town manager, Drew Havens, to start the presentation.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Thank you for taking time out of your Friday to come and chat here a little bit with us about the beach nourishment project. And you all know that we received, we received the bids, three bids, and they were opened on Thursday the ninth as planned. So I'm sorry, Thursday the second is planned. So three bids were received. I was just gonna go through how how we got to this point, what the bids are, and then have a little bit of conversation with you. At the end of the meeting, the action we need from you is to provide your consent to the, consent to the county to accept the bid from, from Weeks Marine. So that, that's at the end. And there may be some additional thinking that we want you to do in terms of added sand, if we can, if we can make that work. So just kind of how we got here, you know, Mr. Wilson, who's on the line and Mr. Priest, who have been from CBE, been working with you on this project, determine the amount of sand that we needed. So the base re-nourishment project of 254,000 cubic yards of sand, and then the sand lost due to the Dorian, just under 171,000 cubic yards. And you see those costs there. These are the original costs that we've been discussing with you. We've been using for, for budget projections and so on. The, the table on the, the second table down here shows how we were planning to fund this project. So as you know, the towns received a grant FEMA for the loss of sand due to Dorian, a DWR grant from, from the state. The county was contributing just a little over a million dollars. And then we were gonna, about two and a half million dollars worth of special obligation bond debt that we were going to take out over a five-year period. So again, about two and a half million dollars. And that's, that's the conversations that we've been having with you throughout the budget process and really since you started discussing this project. So we really got some good news. You see here in this table, the engineer's estimate of 37,370,000. Okay, I was just told my slides aren't, aren't advancing properly on Zoom. All right. So the three council members participating remotely, did you get an email this morning with this presentation in it?
I haven't gotten that yet, but having some technical difficulties, so it may very well be in my inbox.
Okay. Hopefully you all are seeing the, the shared screen now.
Yet.
I'm not sure. Is this what they're seeing with the presentation mode?
Yeah, we can see it now.
All right. So you should be seeing that in, in full screen mode, I hope now.
Yes.
Outstanding. Sorry for the technical difficulties here. Kind of had to go to Plan B to be sure that everyone could see the presentation and we could hear you speaking at the same time. So again, this is the, the funding sources and this shows the total cost and the total volumes. I was getting to the good news. So we had an engineer's estimate a little over 37 million. Then you can see, and I'm sorry, I don't, I don't think you can see the Christian, we have a way to make it so that the Zoom block, are you seeing that? Do you all see the full, the full screen with no Zoom block on the right-hand side?
No, we've got the Zoom block on the right, but it's
Yeah, you, so you can minimize that. So you can see the full slide. And that's what, so Christian's doing that here in the room for us. But so you should be able to see the three bids that were received, Weeks Marine, Great Lakes, dredge and dock, and Manson Construction. You can see that there is a little bit of a spread there in, in those bids. The really good news is the, the low bid is low by about 9.4 million dollars. This, now, this is for the entire four-town project. This is not, not just the town of Duck.
Right.
So we were pleasantly surprised. I was shocked. I, I knew that, that Ken and Adam had really been working hard on their, on their numbers, but you know, in the construction environment we're in now, I was really expecting that we would see something right around their estimate, if not just a little more. So I think we were all very pleasantly surprised with the Weeks Marine bid. So Ken, I'm gonna pause there just for a moment. Do you want to speak to the bid and your work to validate that?
Sure. I mean, we, we have a pretty, a pretty robust checklist of things that we ask them to provide in terms of the bid bond references, you know, verification that, that signatures or, you know, folks that they have authorization to, to to authorize the company into the contract, that they're comfortable with all the materials that we provided. There, there are a lot of things in that, that contract that basically say, once they've signed it, you know, they're agreeing to most of the terms and conditions in there. So we did talk to them the very next morning, asked them if they had any questions specifically, now that, you know, we could kind of be a little bit more open in discussions. They seemed pretty comfortable with, you know, with all the details they provided. I, I specifically asked them about the beach access and staging and duck. They felt pretty comfortable that they, they didn't have anything in writing yet with the, with the homeowners associations, but from what was provided, they felt pretty comfortable in the conversations they've had, that they'll, you know, that they'll be able to find a solution, make that work. And then we talked to them a little bit as well about, you know, moving forward in terms of giving them, we also checked their references. Two of my colleagues, I haven't had the opportunity in North Carolina to work with Weeks Marine. I'm familiar with a lot of their work. But two of our colleagues down in Florida have firsthand knowledge of working with that team. We also checked the three references they provided, which were actually all federal projects. And the federal government, you know, like everything, they've got lots of paperwork. So they've got a specific form that they have these, they, they have their project managers fill out after these dredge projects. And we were able to get those forms from them and a lot of good detail in those forms about, you know, what they did really well, what they did, you know, to a satisfactory, you know, level, things that, that, you know, that you might consider moving into the future. But all in all, these guys are, you know, they, they do this stuff all the time. They, they're certainly qualified to do the work. And we were happy that all the, the, the references checked out. So yeah, that, that's, that's the work that we did to verify the references. We also talked to them a little bit about the schedule moving forward in terms of giving them a commitment. Obviously, they've, they've committed to this cost, but you know, we can't sit on it forever. We told them that, that, that in the contract documents, there is written, a, a written statement that the county or the owner will commit to a notice of intent to award within a 30-day period. The county is scheduled, if everything falls in line with the town, the county is scheduled to approve that or vote on that notice to award letter on their, at their meeting on the 20th of, of September. And then we mentioned that that award is contingent on both the LGC approval on October 5th, as well as the issuance of the, the permits, both the state federal permit and then the, the lease that, that, that the county needs to execute with Bohm. Our best guess at that, the, the town of Ducks permit and the town of Killable Hills permit for the state have already been issued. But our best guess in terms of having all of that in, in place is the end of October. So we wanted to be very open and transparent with Weeks about, you know, how long they may be, you know, kind of hanging out on a limb there with only that notice of intent to award letter. You know, till, till potentially the end of October. And they were comfortable with that. They said that, you know, a lot of non-federal projects have moved in that direction. They're used to dealing with that. But you know, as long as that notice of intent to award letter comes through, and it's clear what the contingencies are in the timeframe, that they would certainly work with us. You know, there's plenty of, plenty of lead-in time. Those guys are, are real concerned about, you know, having to get moving immediately, you know, having bid this out, you know, plenty of time early. They've got, they've got lots of flexibility and seem comfortable with that, those scenarios. So we feel really good about things moving forward right now.
All right. Thanks, Ken. Mayor, Council, anyone have any questions for Mr. Wilson regarding the bids?
May I speak? This is Monica Thibodeau.
Sure.
Go ahead.
Okay, I just, I just wanted to, what I'm, what I'm hearing from Ken Wilson is that, that, that just to reiterate, you feel very comfortable with, with Weeks Marine in terms of being able to deliver what, it, it is, it is quite a difference in price. And of course, all three of them are different. And it, you know, could we surmise that they're just looking to get into this market a little bit to come in with such a lower bid? Or is there any real reason? If you have any insight or thoughts as to how the bid could be that much lower than Great Lakes?
Sure.
Or is that really just speculative?
It, it, it really is. I mean, I, we could come up with a couple of different reasons. And we've talked internally about what, what some of those may be. But the, I mean, the market is so in flux. I mean, these, these guys aren't trying to look to get into the industry. They've, they do lots of hopper dredging projects just like this in the summertime. They, they had a new hopper dredge built that's not quite as large as Great Lakes' biggest hopper dredge. But when it came on the scene back in 2018, I guess, it was the biggest hopper dredge until Great Lakes had theirs completed. So that's the dredge that they assigned to this project. They did mention that, you know, they, they clearly have other hopper dredges. Their fleet is not quite as big as Great Lakes' fleet, but it's bigger than Manson Construction, the other bidder. It's bigger than Dutra, the other bidder that, that did not bid on this project. So, I mean, they, they really are second, you know, in, in terms of the, the amount of equipment to Great Lakes. And, you know, they, they work constantly with, you know, with this type of project, these beach projects. I did mention to them, you know, they, they said that, you know, that, that a lot of the clients that they work with tend to, you know, tend to favor the idea that Weeks is more of a family-owned business, whereas Great Lakes dredging dock is a big corporation. It's a publicly traded company. And we know personally, Adam and I, the difference between, you know, working for a big corporate company and, and working for sort of a, a smaller, you know, family-type business. And, but I told him, I'm like, look, you know, I, I understand how some clients could, could, you know, favor that, that working with, you know, some folks that are a little bit more flexible. But make no mistake, the clients that you're about to go to work for in Dare County, you know, were, were incredibly pleased with that last project. And the bar has been set pretty high. So you guys are gonna have to, you guys are gonna have to do pretty well on this to make everybody happy. So I think they know what the expectations are. And like I said, I mean, we, we have no doubt that they can certainly complete this work. And, and we provided so much information in those, those documents that, you know, that, I, I don't, I don't see room, wiggle room for them to say, you know, we didn't provide them with the information, you know, they misunderstood the project. I mean, the, the documents are huge. There's so much information in there. We've been through this lots of times before, lots of lessons learned, that we, we feel pretty comfortable that they know what the work is. And you know, that's why they bid it where they bid it.
Ken, this is Sandy Whitman.
Sure. Yes.
Hey, one of the things you said before was they agreed with most of the terms and conditions. Were they just minor items that they didn't agree to?
Yeah, I mean, they, they haven't brought up anything. I, I, I may have misspoke when I said most of the terms and conditions, but they, they haven't pointed out anything. They did not, they, they should have submitted something in their bids if there was something that they did not agree to. The way that, the way that the bid documents are phrased, essentially by submitting this bid and not, you know, not providing any written information about what they, what they are in disagreement with. They are, they are prepared to sign the contract as is without any modifications. The only modifications we anticipate is filling in the actual quantities on, on the actual, you know, on the actual contract, make sure that they match, you know, what they bid.
Okay, thank you.
Sure. Good question.
Any other questions from Mr. Wilson? So we'll go back and just talk a little bit more about the, the financing of all this. So what you're seeing here now is the, the original numbers that we were talking about. And then you'll recall very recently, we had an adjustment to those. On the primary adjustment that you see here is to the town funds portion of this. Less than $200,000 difference. And it was as Mr. Wilson and his team refined the, the numbers related to mobilization, some of the other shared costs based on the size, relative size of the, of the projects in the four towns. So just a very small change in, in the numbers. And then, of course, you know, when, when Weeks came in with their bid being lower than the engineer's estimates, Mr. Wilson and his team provided us again, some, some of the breakdown of how the financing works. We're at this point making an assumption that the grant, and we do believe that the grant stays static. The county's contribution, we were assuming, stayed static. And what would change based on the cost of the, contained in the bid, you know, that's the, kind of the dollar per cubic yard, the, so the FEMA reimbursement would change. And then the, our, the town's commitment then would also change. As you see, both of those would go down to meet the, the new total for the town of Duck is just a little over 6 million. So it's 6,71,844 is the new bottom line for Duck's portion of this project. The question now becomes the county's contribution. So I asked that question of the county manager. And what I was told was the savings, because of the bids came in much lower, the savings returned to the county. So the town would not then see these savings pass through to us. So the county's contribution really would go away. I asked some questions about that. Being very candid and being a novice with this, not understanding how the process works. And it really is, the intent is to try to build up the county's fund. So that's ours too. Sorry, we're part of, we're part of the county. So it's to build up that beach fund for future projects. So the idea is that any savings that were unanticipated, and these were, again, would return to that fund. So we, I kind of went back through and, and reworked some numbers, taking the county's contribution out. And I, I did not ask Mr. Wilson to verify these numbers. So the, the total stays the same. He and I can work through what the, or he worked through and tell me what it is, the, the balance between the FEMA's portion of it and what we're going to have to finance over five years. So yesterday evening, early evening, I had another conversation with the county manager. And as they started to look at the numbers, they are now seeing that, you know, if the savings are basically returned to the county, their contribution goes to zero. And they're thinking that that's not what they really intended that to do. So they're looking more at their numbers. And I don't have from Mr. Outman and his team yet, the, the numbers of what their, their skin in the game here will be from the, from that beach fund. So that's still a question. So it doesn't, it doesn't change, you know, the, kind of the end of this meeting, which is, you know, will you, will, will we go forward with the Weeks Marine bid? So that's still the primary question we're trying to answer. The secondary question that we want to answer is, can we, can we afford to buy more sand? So they, so I had to circle the town's the town's contribution changes. So and let me just do this in a different way.
Drew, just one quick question on FEMA. Does that go down as a result of the cost of the sand?
Correct. That's correct.
Yeah, I'll just, I'll just say one, one more thing, Drew. The, the other way that the, I mean, the FEMA cost does go down as a, as a function of the unit cost of the sand. It's not a, it shouldn't be seen as like a firm grant, like those numbers that are up in the top of Drew's chart. That, that shouldn't be seen as like a grant, the way that the Division of Water Resources grant is. It's essentially an estimate of what the reimbursement would be based on assumed unit costs for the project. And so the, the town and the county are going to pay for all that sand upfront. And they will have to show FEMA what the, what, you know, what they paid for the work that is specifically outlined in a report that we provided to FEMA. And whatever you end up paying for that, whether it would have been a little more, or whether it's a little less, is what FEMA will reimburse you for. The other thing that's a little bit static, that those numbers don't stay the same, is if, if any of the towns change the volume that they want to put on the beach, the mobilization costs, as Drew showed earlier, is, is prorated based on the amount of volume each town is placing on the beach. And then your FEMA cost assumes that FEMA is paying a portion of the mobilization that is assigned to Duck. And so if the volume distribution changes a little bit, those FEMA numbers will change a little bit too. But now we're, we're at least locked into a unit cost of what the bid is and a volume. That volume is also static for what FEMA will pay for. But some of the other numbers in the FEMA estimate can, can, can change a little bit. And that's why sometimes you'll see those numbers move around just a little bit.
Okay. Is everything, is everyone sufficiently confused yet? Because if you're not all, I'll see if we can make you a little more confused. Ken, thanks for, thanks for doing that. There are a lot of moving, a lot of moving parts to this. And Ken, Ken's been fantastic trying to keep me pointed in the right direction. So wanted just to show this, this chart, just to reframe your thinking a little bit. So the red numbers here are annual debt service. And we're not talking about the FEMA portion of it at all. So this is just the town's five-year special obligation bond debt. So originally, we were talking about 2.4, almost 2.5 million. Remember, we had that little adjustment. So we were at the 2.6 is where we were. You can see what the, the delta is in the debt service area, very small difference. I will tell you that these debt, debt service numbers are based on 2.25%. When we were talking with you earlier in the spring, we were using 3% as just kind of a ballpark for interest rates. So 75 basis points less here. Really expect that we're gonna save a little north of an additional 25 basis points when we go to the market. The, the Carter's feel that we're looking at sub 2%. So the financing will, obviously, will save a little bit of money on that as well. But again, just trying to be a little bit, not worst case, but very realistic in terms of what your debt service picture looks like. So with the, the Weeks bid, the way it came in, assuming the county was fully in still at that 1 million, we were then looking to borrow just, just under 1.2 million dollars. And you can see the, what the change is in the, the debt service. We were looking at just around $250,000 for debt service versus 560. So quite a bit of difference. So at that point, I was starting to talk with Mr. Wilson saying, well, how much more sand can we put on the beach? Remember, you remember, there were some conversations that you all had with Mr. Wilson about improving the project and its, its durability, if you will, if we added some more sand. The council at that point decided, you know, we've projected our finances and we've talked to the people that we're serving about how much money this was going to cost. We're not going to add any more sand. We want to keep our costs where they are. Based on that, so if, if we want to keep our costs the same, we could have gotten more sand. Now, without the county, you can see, so if the county goes to zero, which is kind of where we are right now with, with the understanding that we probably will get some county participation, but we don't have that number, so I can't model it for you. So without the county, our, we need, will need to borrow about 2.2 million dollars. So the delta there is only about $400,000 in borrowing. So the, so then the delta in the debt service is rather small. So we're not, we're not going to be able to buy a whole lot of sand for $400,000. So we weren't really thinking in terms of what can we buy for additional. However, if the county's coming back in with something that makes it worthwhile to add sand that will help the project, we don't want to add, you know, a truckload of sand, because that's not really going to make a whole lot of difference. And you saw the, the charts and stuff that Mr. Wilson had shown you before. Ken, are you prepared to show anything today?
I, I mean, I can show those, those charts that we had that just sort of, it, it might stir folks' memory and how we were, how we were phrasing this, or how we were framing this previously.
Counsel, I'll, I'll look to you. Do you want to see that? Or do you, is that fresh enough in your minds that you recall? We were talking about adding a certain number of cubic yards of sand. And it was, it was getting our cost up in, you know, a couple of million dollars worth of cost up. Yeah, so it was, one of them was 4 million. Yeah, one was for around 4 million. So it was, it was significant. But we were, we were really hoping that if the county were staying in, we were gonna add about, we could add about 106,000 cubic yards of sand. And, you know, Ken and Adam and the team could figure out where that would be the most beneficial. We're not going to be able to add that much. Unless the county comes back fully in, which I don't, I don't expect that at all.
Drew, I will say that as council is considering these numbers, Weeks has made the math really easy for everybody. Your unit cost is $10 a cubic yard. So that makes, that makes the math real, real simple. We talk about what we can, what we can add to the project.
Okay. Ken, this is Sandy again.
Yes, sir.
$10 per cubic yard. And before you said that there was a increase, if we added sand, it was going to be an increase in mobilization cost. How do they justify that when we're paying upfront to get all the equipment here?
That's right. So there is, now, now that we have all of the numbers, there is no adjustment in mobilization cost. That mobilization cost is now fixed, and that's built into all of Drew's, you know, projections here. So it makes, it, it takes one variable off the table for sure. It makes these projections and these discussions, you know, much easier to, to, to wrap your head around, not as many moving parts.
But when $10 a, $10 a yard is the fixed cost then now?
That's correct.
Can, may I ask if you could tell us what a Great Lakes cost per yard was?
Uh, give me just a second and I'll pull that up.
So, so just for, for clarity, Mr. Whitman, so yeah, it's, it's $10 a cubic yard.
Correct.
The mobilization costs are fixed. However, if we end up putting more sand on, our proportion and mobilization cost changes.
See, this is where I'm confused.
It should go down, right, Ken?
Well, if you, if you guys end up, if you guys end up adding volume, your percentage of the load will go up slightly. But I mean, and that, and that's what we were doing the other day, when, when Drew and I first talked about trying to, to redo the model and, and, you know, make this assumption of keeping the county's contribution fixed. You know, we were, we were playing inside the spreadsheet that was, that was doing that on the fly. And so, you know, we were, we were increasing and decreasing. So yeah, I think, I think that's where your, your question comes from. Sandy, about, about the mobilization cost. So the, the total mobilization cost is now fixed, but as you guys add volume, it, it's not exactly a one-to-one, a one-to-one trade-off, $10 per cubic yard. It, it will be, you know, fractionally smaller. And to answer your question, Great Lakes's unit cost was $10.80 as opposed to
Okay. Now, my other question is, I thought in the bid package, there was 10% plus or minus on the sand that we're going to either put on or not put on the beach at no cost.
So it's, it, it is 15% in the contract. And basically, basically what that says is we could increase or decrease the volume. And they cannot, you know, they still get paid for the actual volume they place, but they couldn't change they place, but they couldn't change that unit cost from 10 to something else. Um, and so, but we, but we have specifically talked to Weeks about the possibility of, because the cost savings are, were greater than anticipated, if we went beyond that 15% in the increased direction, would they feel comfortable with that? And they said that yes, they, they would certainly work with us if we went to 20 or 25% increase. He said that there probably is some point in time where the project becomes different of what they bid on it. If, you know, the volume, the, the total project volume went up by 50% or something like that, and now work that they were going to do after this project is, is jeopardized because this project has gotten so much bigger, that could be an issue. But the numbers that we've thrown out to them and in terms of what we might be considering changing this by are, are numbers that they said they'd be happy to work with us on.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Hey Ken, this is Don. Are any of the other towns, uh, looking at adding more sand?
So Kitty Hawk, Kitty Hawk has been discussing, that we, we've been discussing this with Kitty Hawk a little bit as well. Um, the other two towns, uh, I, I think they're pretty fixed in where they are and, and how those projects were designed. But Kitty Hawk could probably use a little bit more sand. Uh, I wouldn't say it's, you know, a- as, as big of a deal as some of the things that we've talked to you all about. But in a, in a perfect world, I think we'd probably recommend a little bit more sand in Kitty Hawk. But after the conversations that, um, you know, Bobby had with Drew yesterday morning, he had similar conversations with Andy. And I think both towns were, were, you know, told the same thing that, hey, you know, the, the rules were, if there are savings, the county gets the savings. And so that, that's kind of, that had closed the book as of yesterday afternoon on any of the other towns increasing their volume.
Thanks, Ken.
Sure.
Okay. So in the interest of time, I'm just going to, going to run through. So, um, you recall the last time we met, we looked at what our beach fund looked like. Uh, this is just the projection of the, the fiscal year-end balance. There are four different, um, different scenarios that are run here. Um, if you can't see it on your screen, the green bar is, is kind of the original. So that 2.4, um, and then the adjusted amount, and then the weeks bid is the blue bar. And the weeks without the county is the yellow bar. So obviously, the, the more money that we have to spend, the slower the fund builds. Um, so what you end up seeing, seeing here is, I'm sorry, this is revenue versus expenditure. This is not year-end, my apologies. So this is, this is revenue in excess of expenditure. So this is money that we're adding to the fund each year. And then we'll go to, uh, the beach fund balance at year-end. Again, green being kind of the, what we were originally planning, the orange being the adjusted, based on the week's bid, uh, how the fund would grow. And then weeks bid without the county contribution, uh, is the, is the last, the yellow bar. So in all of these, your fund, your beach fund balance grows. So at some point, the council, next year, we're, we're looking at the budget, we'll be talking more to you about this. We, you know, you let it grow to the point where the next, in five years from now, you write a check for beach nourishment, or have to borrow significantly less for it. Um, or do you reduce your income through reduction in the MSD rate and, you know, obviously, the corresponding reduction than in shared tax revenue rate, which is based on your, your levy. So all this is say, your fund grows, um, under really all the scenarios we have right now. So really, we're, we're looking for your direction. So I, I've written out a couple of different motions. One is just to approve the, you know, requesting that Dare County approve the week's bid as if, um, it's per the recommendation from CPE, no change in the scope of the project for the town of Duck. The second motion here is the re- same request of approval of the week's bid, and then to authorize me to work with Ken to see if we can add additional sand. So once we hear from the county how much they're going to put back into our project, have me work with Ken, see if we can add sand that will help the project up to the limit of what we were originally planning to borrow. So the town's contribution, just not the FEMA portion or anything else, just our borrowing, would be at or below 2.49 million, which again, that's the original amount that we were talking about several months ago. So two different motions, leave it as it is, and rock on, uh, or add, add some sand, still keeping the same expenditure that we had planned, uh, all along. And again, that's that green, kind of the green bar shows you that your fund does, your beach fund does continue to grow, uh, even if we spend that additional.
Well, this is Don. I personally like the second motion. Let you deal with the county, see what the money is and deal with Ken. And if we can get, you know, more sand for the same budgeted price, I mean, that seems like a good deal.
Questions? Could you, I have a question on that second motion. I don't disagree with you, Mayor. I was, this is Monica. I just was going to say that, that if any, um, additional sand can be added, so we would come back as a council and decide exactly, or we would be authorized in the manager to decide how much? Where does that decision point happen? And do we get involved in that if we go with the second motion?
Monica, if I interpret the motion is to, to let Drew make that determination. I mean, I don't think the council needs to get back and approve it if in fact, we give them the authorization to deal with, uh, Ken and the county within that dollar amount.
Okay. So the motion is basically stick with the 2.49 million and see what we can get for it, uh, sort of, in another, worded another way?
Correct. And the reason I, candidly, the reason I worded it that way is if the county comes back in and the amount of money that we have to spend to get to that 2.49, it, it will buy us some sand, but it doesn't buy us enough sand for it to have a beneficial effect to the project. And that's something that we're going to rely on Adam and Ken. Say, you know, if we can only come, come back in with, you know, $250,000, they're probably going to say, you know, that's just not enough to, to make it worth, worth your while. So I want to be able to have those conversations with, you know, the expert consultants to say, yeah, that, that amount of additional sand helps your project, measurably helps your project. Um, so again, just giving some flexibility so we don't have to come back to the council and say, okay, we're now at, you know, 2.2 million. Are you okay with it?
Got it.
Hey, Drew, this is a question for Ken. Do we, are this additional sand going to be used for some of the hotspots that are up there now, or just spread it throughout the, uh, full length of the beach?
Yeah, I think that, um, I think that whatever you guys feel comfortable adding, uh, we, we would get behind regardless of what that quantity is. We think that, that the more you guys can add to this project, that it will benefit the project. And we, based on the analysis that we did, the, the numerical modeling that we've talked a lot about, I, I think that we would probably recommend placing it along that 3,000-foot section in the center of the project. I don't remember exactly the, the roads, um, maps, but I, I think our recommendation would be whatever increase in sand we can get, configure it the way that we were talking about in that, that option where we were kind of stacking material in the center of the project. Uh, I think that, that the uniform consistency of the project as we bid it out will probably stay the same. And we would try to pile as much of that sand in that central portion, uh, whatever increase in sand, we would place it there.
Okay, thank you.
Didn't we, when, when we had this discussion a while back with Ken, and we decided not to add the extra sand, um, just because we're going to have extra money now, it doesn't change that, in my opinion, it doesn't change the logic between then and now. And so I, I'm more inclined to, to support the first motion. I mean, there's an ability here to save, to save ourselves a significant amount of money and to do other things. And if it's, you know, if we can ease the burden on people in the MSDs, or whatever it is, whatever the best course of action to do with, you know, 1.3 million dollars, um, I think that's what we ought to do.
Well, Rob, didn't you, originally, I thought you voted for the, uh, extra sand when we voted for it the first time around.
Say that again, Sandy?
I thought you voted for the extra sand the first time around.
No.
Drew, if you have time, can I, can I show one graphic? Can I try to share one graphic?
Sure. Um, and just, I, I want to be mindful of time. We've got about six minutes. Um, Ms. Kavinas has a, a hard stop at 10.
Oh, sorry. That's my fault.
Nancy or Sandy, any additional comments?
No, I don't, I don't have any additional comments. I, I'm, I'm just afraid that this, this is going to go longer than I can participate. So I don't know if I need to be formally excused from the meeting. Uh, I can't imagine that this is going to come to a conclusion in five minutes. And I do have a commitment that I do not have any flexibility with. So, um, I know Robert is there. Do I need to be formally excused from the meeting?
Uh, that, that's certainly the option, an option of the council to excuse you from the meeting.
You have an opinion on this, Nancy?
Well, I didn't, my only thought is I don't want us to exceed, uh, what we had anticipated spending. And when we had discussed it before, I, I wasn't convinced that, uh, you know, additional sand would, would really benefit us because that additional sand had such a high price tag. If, if working up to that original budgeted price has the potential to strengthen the project, then I don't think that that's unreasonable. Um, I guess, I guess the, the long and short of it is that I could live with either decision that the council makes at this point.
What's the timetable from the standpoint of making the final decision? Because we've got to go to the LGC.
So we, we have application already into the LGC with the, the higher numbers in there. So borrowing up to-
So basically, if we, we authorize motion number two, you can still come back to the first meeting in October and get final concurrence from council, county council?
Yeah. When do you need, when do we need to sign the, the contract, Ken, with the, the final quantities in it?
Yeah. So I don't, I don't think that, uh, I, I don't think that they're worried about that notice of intent. Um, I think if we just put in that we're committed to that base volume, which you guys are already, you know, already considering that 424, or whatever that number is, um, I, I think that there's plenty of time later on to negotiate that increase in the volume. I, I don't think that that needs to be settled in terms of weeks, um, a- anytime. And then, you know, before the LGC meeting, or even probably before, you know, the, I think we probably have till the end of October, probably even more time than that. I think they'll entertain this discussion, you know, in the coming months. Um, so I don't think it's a huge rush as to increase. I guess the only thing would be, you know, that LGC. But as you said, you're just talking about going up to the previously, you know, projected borrowing number. So-
Correct.
So the second motion really allows you to tell the county, let's go with Weeks. Number one and number two is authorize you to continue to work with Ken and Adam with respect to, and the county with respect to what we could potentially add.
Correct.
So that's not really, that's not really a commitment.
First motion, um, allows us to, to advise the county that we'd like them to, to choose Weeks Marine. And according to what Ken just said, we can negotiate more sand if we, if that's the, that's the desire later on. It's, it just seems safer and more prudent to me.
My apologies, everybody. I have to leave the meeting.
All right.
All right, Nancy.
I would just suggest that the council vote to, or have a motion to excuse Nancy from the meeting, just so that that's on record.
All right, I'll make the motion to excuse Nancy from the meeting. Any discussion? There being none, also, in favor, please say aye.
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 Nancy, you are excused. Well, along those same lines, Rob, um, there's no commitment in the, in the motion number two, but it just authorizes the, Drew, to continue to pursue that. It's not, not a commitment on our part.
I would agree with that. If there's no commitment, uh, if we can still see the final numbers, um, and get the rationale of the higher expense, then I would be in favor of allowing the town man- town manager to proceed with, and with the, uh, with the analysis and the investigation of that. Um, and so that we can see what exactly the budgeted amount brings us in terms of project. If that's the intent of the second motion, I would be in favor of that.
Clarification, Drew? Would this Monica's interpretation correct?
Yeah, I, I think we could just add to the end of that motion and return to the town council with the information for our final approval or final consideration.
Monica, would that be acceptable to you? We have two motions on the floor. Would someone like to put one of the motions forward?
Drew, can I, can I make one clarification on, on the motion? E- either one or two. One thing that we, we probably do need some clarification with so that the county can move forward is that in the week's bid, um, there were two additive items. One is, um, the post-construction survey costs that they have, which, which are actually lower than what we projected. And we would recommend allowing them to do those post-construction surveys. There's some logistical reasons why I think that's going to work really well in our favor in the future to monitor the project and having those done directly after the project. But the other additive item was to allow Weeks Marine to contract with, you know, or subcontract out and install sand fencing in the way that the town has decided they would like sand fencing installed after the completion of the project. Their bid price was $60, um, uh, per, per, per section. Um, the, the towns have talked about the potential of they, they may be able to get a better price locally to allow that to happen. Um, we've assumed that $60, um, unit cost for, you know, in all the projections that Drew is showing. So you're sort of like, those costs are already included in your negotiations with the county. But the question is, do you allow Weeks Marine to do that work, um, and just, you know, you know, brush your hands of it? Uh, or, or do you, you know, work with yourselves or, or the other towns to try to get a better price for that sand fencing? And, and that, that, that's probably something that we do want to clarify in this notice of intent letter that the county is going to issue on the 20th. Just whether or not the towns want to include that as part of Weeks Marine's cost, or whether they want to handle it on their own.
Hey, Ken, do you know what we paid last time for our fencing?
We were using $40 a cube, uh, or $40 a section previously, but that was five years ago. And I, I know the, you know, the price of lumber is going up and, you know, price of labor is going up. So I, I mean, all of the, all of the bids were sort of in that 60 to $70 range. Um, I have talked to some of the towns that still do believe that they could do better than, than $60. Um, but I don't know who is, who's dug in the most on that.
So we're, we're thinking that may end up being in the neighborhood, uh, Mr. Hurd was just saying about somewhere in the neighborhood of 10,000 to 15,000 that we could save if we took it out and did it on our own. Of course, then we would be administering the project and-
And what's our plus in that, Drew? If we pull it out and administer it ourselves?
Yeah, that, that's not included in that, Mr. Whitman. So yeah, that's, that's what I was saying. So that does not include the, you know, us having the, to, you know, to do the RFP, do the, you know, do the, do the whole bid and selection process and then manage that aspect of the project. So that's why, that's why I, we had really kind of thought we just leave it in there right now. It's up to council.
That makes sense to me. I mean, that's a lot. I would- I would.
Well, in favor of time, I'd like to make the motion on number two, adding that in fact, manager will bring back, uh, to town council, the results of, uh, working with the county and CPNA. So any discussion on the motion on the floor?
Mr. Mayor, I think, do we need to clarify about the sand fencing in your motion?
No, that's.
Was that what our recommendation was? Okay.
No, that's all built in. Um, we had not.
Then I would support. Okay.
Any other discussion or questions? We'll do a roll call vote. So the mayor votes aye on the motion. Councilmember Mooney?
No.
My pro temp, Thibodeau?
Aye.
And councilmember Whitman?
Aye.
The motion passes three to one with the clarification. Any other discussion, Drew?
No, sir.
Based on that, I'll. I'm sorry. Drew, can you guys see that, that, that graphic? I just wondered if we could explain. I keep going back, to, to one of the questions that I heard a minute ago. Uh, so in terms of, in terms of the justification of adding sand, this is a graphic that we'd shown previously. And, and, and the red, the red, everything on here that's red is something that's new that we've added. So essentially before the project, this was our, our baseline volume. This is the addition of the sand during the 2017 project. This is the, the variable, you know, losses and gains, this green line since the construction of the project in 2017. And based on the rate that we measured along this green line, we've projected that rate out into the future. And so the, this is the latest survey that we had in April of 2021. We projected a loss of, at, at that rate down to right before this, this upcoming 2022 project happens. And then each one of these jumps is a different scenario. You know, the blue scenario was the, you know, the, the largest scenario that we had recommended. The orange was kind of that intermediate, um, recommendation or option two. And then the black was option three, and that's the one that council had voted on moving forward with, um, at the, at that June meeting. But one of the, one of the things that, um, you'll notice is that at the end of this cycle, our projection would say, in 2022, right before the project is built, this is where your volume would be. This is the volume that would be included in the, in the beach project, and then we'd add to it from there. If you look out and project that, that, that volume loss over five years, and you look at the black scenario, which is the one that we were on, it actually shows that if, if, if we do lose sand at the same rate, and, and there are reasons to believe that, 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 that the second project won't quite lose sand at that same rate. But if we assume it does lose sand at that same rate, you will end up after five years losing ground from where you started in 2022. And that's something that, that concerned us as we were looking at these projections. And so the orange projection was actually, was actually designed specifically to sort of hold the line of where we were in April of 2021. There wasn't anything magic about that position, but at least we were picking a point and holding the line there. This red line that we have now added essentially shows that, that, um, if we were to, if we were to, if the county were to maintain their level of contribution, the assumption that, that, uh, that Drew was showing in, in those tables previously. If the county maintained their previous contribution level and the town stayed at their 2.49 million, we could get up to this red line. And if we got up to that red line, that means that if the, if those erosion rates hold, those projections hold, we would actually end up in a little bit better position than when we started in 2022 at the end of the five-year scenario. And, and that's really what we want to do. I mean, obviously we don't, you know, reaching this blue point, which is, you know, going back to the original design, that's the ideal scenario. But we do want to increase, you know, we do want to make up ground as we're going forward in this project cycle. We do not want to continue to lose ground. And so those are the things that, that Drew and I will be considering as we, you know, make these recommendations moving forward. We're looking at, you know, trying to build up that volume from where we, where we project we'll end up at right before the 2022 project is, is built.
Any other discussion?
Thank you for that clarification. That was helpful.
Sure.
There's no other questions or discussion, then I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
All favorably say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned.
Aye.